Thank you all for being here and under these circumstances, but we'll get through it best we can. And I just want to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. And I will lead the pledge, actually I'll lead the prayer, and then we'll have the pledge and meet the following. Let's pray. Our Father and Abin, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this assembly and thank you for keeping us safe and helping us all through this COVID-19. And we just pray that you'll continue to bless us, bless this county, bless this meeting as we try to do your will and our governance of the county. And we pray that all things we do tonight will be done according to your will. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Our pledge and leades.
The reasons to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill Adams?
Here.
Bernard Arnold?
Here.
Eugene Campbell?
Here.
Jerry Gentry?
Here.
Jerry Groundstaff?
Here.
Evelyn Hill?
Here.
Jimmy Lowe?
Here.
Scott Mast?
Here.
Megan McEwen?
Here.
David McLean?
Here.
Jenna Mead?
Here.
Joey Norris? Freddie Phipps?
Here.
Tommy Poor?
Here.
Rick Snyder?
Here.
Four team present.
We do have a quorum, so at this time I'll call the meeting to order. I will say for the record, we are operating on restricted public access tonight. And we will be allowing call-ins by Zoom. And for those that are not here, I'll try my best to give you an opportunity to speak. If I don't, just speak up. Hopefully Dustin will know that you're speaking if you're muted and I will give you a chance to speak. So we'll vote everything, I believe, roll call. That way you'll have a chance to vote. All right, moving on. Item number five, acceptance of the actual minutes. Everyone has a chance to review the minutes. Motion by Mr. Tommy Poor. Your second? Second by Jerry Gentry. Roll call, please.
Bill Adams?
Yes.
Bernard Arnold?
Yes.
Eugene Campbell?
Yes.
Jerry Gentry?
Yes.
Jerry Groundstaff?
Yes.
Evelyn Hill?
Yes.
Jimmy Lowe?
Yes.
Scott Mast? Megan McEwen?
Yes.
David McLean?
Yes.
Jenna Mead?
Yes.
Freddie Phipps?
Yes.
Tommy Poor?
Yes.
Rick Snyder?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number six, quarterly reports and committee reports. Okay. I didn't think so, because we did them last month. Committee reports. Okay. All right. Any stand-in committee members here that has anything to report on? Anyone on the phone that has anything to report on? Okay. Moving on, do we have any notaries?
We have two, Glenda Fallon and Courtney Leanne Green.
Motion by Mr. Bill Adams. Your second? Second by Ms. Evelyn Hill. Roll call.
Bill Adams?
Yes.
Bernard Arnold?
Yes.
Eugene Campbell?
Yes.
Jerry Gentry?
Yes.
Jerry Groundstaff?
Yes.
Evelyn Hill?
Yes.
Jimmy Lowe?
Yes.
Scott Mast?
Yes.
Megan McEwen?
Yes.
David McLean?
Yes.
Jenna Mead?
Yes.
Freddie Phipps?
Yes.
Tommy Poor?
Yes.
Rick Snyder?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight, approved budget amendments. Everyone had a chance to look at the amendments. Any questions for Russell or anyone? Yes, we did meet Tuesday night combined with our annual budget meeting, and they were approved in that meeting. So no questions, all entertaining motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Scott Mast with the motion. Mr. Jerry Gentry with the second.
Groundstaff or Gentry?
Sorry, Groundstaff.
Okay. I had my back clean, so how about you?
Yeah, you're right. I can't even write Jerry G down here. I have to write the whole name down.
All right, you ready?
Yeah, roll call.
Bill Adams?
Yes.
Bernard Arnold?
Yes.
Eugene Campbell?
Yes.
Jerry Gentry?
Yes.
Jerry Groundstaff?
Yes.
Evelyn Hill?
Yes.
Jimmy Lowe?
Yes.
Scott Mast?
Yes.
Megan McEwen?
Yes.
David McLean?
Yes.
Jenna Mead?
Yes.
Freddie Phipps?
Yes.
Tommy Poor?
Yes.
Rick Snyder?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine, I guess is what we took off and we skipped over and now it's number 10. Item number 10, resolution to apply for local government grants. Over here, please. Everybody can hear me, they can hear me on the phone. The governor put it in this upcoming budget. He put monies in there that counties can apply for for grant funding. And each county, and it depends on the census count. So that's one thing we need to be encouraged to be to fill out the census report. The amount of money that we can apply for depends on what our census count is. So continue to encourage your neighbors and people go to church with people see to fill out their census. But because of our census count, we can apply for a grant for $637,865. $637,865. So some of the things that I need to apply to that grant, and I have the application pretty much finished and the grant written, I have to have a resolution approved by the county commission stating that you're okay with me submitting this application for this grant. You're limited what you can spend these monies on. I gave you a list, most of y'all a list of the things that were approved that you can spend the money on. You can spend the monies on some IT upgrades. You can spend it on maintenance of your buildings. You can spend it on matching funds for grants that you are applying for. And this is a non-matching grant too. We don't have to put up any match for it. It's just monies that we can apply for and hopefully get. But no match, you're limited on what you can apply for. Russell and myself and Dustin have gone through this list. We started out with a wish list of some things. And what we tried to look at are some areas in the county where we end up spending a lot of money in maintenance and a lot of money in repairs and just keeping these things up. So we revised this list. I think Dustin and Russell kind of got to the point that said, hopefully this was the last draft. But what we're trying to do is find areas in the county where over the next two to five years, it's going to cost us money right out of our budget. So we're trying to use this money to fix some things that need a repair, that's been in need of some repair for a good while, buy some new things for some other departments. I gave you a copy of what the budget looks like that I want to submit to tomorrow, actually. If you approve this resolution tonight, Perry did a great job writing resolution. It's about two pages long. And if you approve for me to submit the application, that's basically what the resolution says. Just in some fancy lawyer terms there that Perry went to school to learn about, I suppose. But let's go through the list. I'll kind of explain to you what I had with Russell and Dustin's help. First of all, on the list, the courthouse heating and air conditioning system. We get dollars to death on that thing and it's getting old. So we have in here an estimate of $150,000 to do some upgrades and repair on that system in the courthouse. We get a lot of complaints about that regularly, don't we Sheriff? He gets a lot of calls for it and he has a guy down here working on it. On a cold day in the wintertime, when Charlie Cutler was working, Charlie would have to go down and reset the boiler maybe two times in one day. So I'm hoping that money will get a boiler, will do some work maybe on the cooling tower and at least replace the boards, all the electronic boards that are bad. There's two pumps in that thing and it kind of alternates between two pumps. There, I'll give you a real quick overview of that system. There's a sensor out in the middle of the courthouse there somewhere that reads the temperature. It sends a signal back to a control down in the basement. And that control, because of the pressure on the sensor, tells this pump how much pressure to put on pump, how much water to push through that thing. It's a water source heat pump. Well, that thing doesn't work. One of the variable drives that controls the motors to speed it up and down is burned up. It's not even in place. The other one is burned up. And they just have this motor, there's two motors that should rotate or should move back forth between two motors. The one motor is just wired straight, wide open. It runs all the time, spread wide open, so there's no control of it. So we are in need of controls. The two variable drives, get those replaced, are about $10,000. And then the motor, one motor, I'm not sure if it's good or bad because it's not even wired in. We're just running that one motor all the time. It needs an upgrade. So we figured, Dustin, I bet, guess about $150,000 to do as much as we can. The second thing is the courthouse elevator. A year or so ago, the courthouse elevator was down for a couple, three days. And the circuit boards in that thing are old. There's probably the original circuit boards that went in the thing back when they put it in. And I don't know when they put that in. Do you remember Jerry, was that 95-ish or 2000-ish or something?
Somewhere right in.
But the old circuit boards. Yep. It was when they did the expansion on the courthouse, whatever year that was. Those boards, they couldn't find them anywhere. They're not making those circuit boards anymore, so they had to take. There's a guy we ought to ask, he was here. So it's been there a while. So that thing, the boards in it, if they go bad, we're not going to get any circuit boards that we can plug right in there. So we want to upgrade all the electronics, electrical parts of that thing. Dustin figures that's about $75,000 we can do an upgrade. If the elevator's down, we've got some pretty serious troubles. Okay, we're not ADA compliant anymore. People use that thing a lot. So that's $75,000. So $150,000 for the courthouse heat and air system, $75,000 for the upgrade on the elevator. We've been asked several times about ADA compliant doors for the courthouse. For people who need access in a wheelchair or some other handicap can get there, hit a button and the doors automatically open for them. I know any, we get complaints about our doors regularly. The doors that are there are like the elevator, they've been there the whole time, they're worn out. They get worked on quite a bit and on the rest, somebody has to come and adjust and whatnot. But the state doesn't mandate that we have ADA compliant handicap doors, but it's a good suggestion. If you build any new structures, I'm sure you'd have to put them in. But $15,000, Dustin's had the things priced, that's about the cost of adding. And another thing complicates that, we have to have two, because you have that outside set of doors and then you have that inside set of doors. So we get on the ADA board, Bill's the chairman of that board. We get requests about that all the time, about when we're going to get those installed. $15,000. This is suggesting by Dustin and he's thinking, he says those old chairs up in the courtroom, all the jury chairs and I don't know about the attorney's chairs, but Dustin says attorney chairs too. And just those staff chairs and people, support up there in the courtroom. Dustin figures that that's going to be about $15,000 to replace those chairs. They've got quite a few miles on them too, I think. So. So. Say that again?
Some of here are lost for the worst chairs.
Worst chairs they are, so we. And the worst elevator?
The elevator's pretty good.
So jury chairs, jury chairs for the courthouse, replace those chairs, about $15,000. Dustin says the judge's chairs, pretty good, he said.
Judge's chairs.
Did you order them? He says they're pretty good. So then we changed gears. Another thing you do is roof. We're having to do some patching on the senior center. Senior center roof does need replacing and Dustin figures that's about $50,000 to replace that roof on the senior center. Next is the tax assessor office roof. We've talked about that for a good while. It needs replacing, we figure that's about $20,000. The Kellogg building roof, that belongs half to the city, half to the county. Kevin Parsons and I agreed if we will put the roof on the Kellogg building, he agreed that they would do the heating and air conditioning system. The heat pump up there is shot. So probably the cost is going to be about equal, I would think. So there's $8,000. Now you notice I bolded matching funds for the RTB grant. You remember a year or so ago, we set aside $50,000, spread out over four years to pay the county's portion of the million dollar RTB grant for Doe Mountain? We can use this grant money from the governor grant, you can use that as your matching funds toward another grant. So that'll take $50,000 right out of the budget that we were going to have to prepare to put that in if we can get this grant approved. So there's $50,000. And I'm not running a tally, but there's several thousand dollars. The next one is transfer station scales. We talked about that one too. Down at the transfer station, those scales, I guess are the original scales, aren't they Bill?
Yeah, there's probably 27.
If that thing goes down down there, we're going to have a whole lot of trouble. So I think it'd be a good opportunity for us to upgrade the scales. Dustin and I talked about upgrading the software too, but I got digging further into this grant and it won't let us do software. So we can do the scales and maybe, you know, at some other point, we could do the software. And repair the solid waste parking lot while we're down there. We had Jeff go out and look at it about repaving the whole thing, but it's going to be way over $100,000 to repay everything down there. So we talked about just repairing the cracks and putting seal on it and sealing stopper. One other thing you can use this money for is for community, or emergency services kind of thing. We have eight volunteer fire departments and every time I talk to those ladies and gentlemen that work there, you know, we appreciate really what they do, they're in need of some funding. They have equipment that's old and worn out and they need to replace things. So I figured $10,000 for fire department, which makes $80,000 in that line right there. So that would give each of the eight volunteer fire departments $10,000 for a one-time purchase. And if you approve this, I'll go to their district meeting or that monthly meeting they have and explain to them that maybe Russell can give you some guidance there. It'll be a one-time expenditure and they'll have to turn in, you know, bills one time. We can't, Russell, you can't chase it all for a year. The next one is sheriff's department communication. You remember just months ago, we had to take money out to replace a repeater up on the mountain. And we want to check, see, and either there's one or two others that need to be replaced or the sheriff has planned to add a new repeater to Stone Mountain, which will give him a better coverage of the whole county, I think you're saying. So we want to use it, you can use it for upgrades to your communication system too. Another item and the sheriffs in need of is a patrol car. And as he explained to us at the budget meeting, they don't make Crown Vics anymore. I don't think they make Chevy and Pallas. I think everybody's going to SUV-type vehicles. So a Ford Explorer sheriff patrol car is $46,000. So we figured in at least one of those vehicles for the sheriff. The last thing on the list is DHS. You know, the county owns the DHS building up there. We have had some, in the past year and two or three months, we've had some folks say that it's mild dewy up there. That it's, they feel like there's a lot of moisture in the air. So Dustin's had it tested twice since I've been the county mayor. It's been tested twice, the air's good and clean. But we can add a dehumidifier to that system and hopefully, you know, dry that building up and we won't have those issues anymore. That's the list that I'm proposing. Now, what I did first, we talked about upgrading the old jail and putting some office space in there and maybe some storage. I had Tom Shanks come up and look at it. Tom Shanks said that it would take $600,000 just to get kind of started. To get the roof, do some cleanup, electrical plumbing, windows, doors, just kind of getting started. It costs about $600,000. So he said the best option there would be to tear it down and spend about a million and a half dollars, build a new building. So after we heard that news, Russell, myself, Dustin, we just began working on what we thought was going to be some things that would really help us as a county toward our budget in the next, you know, two to five years. So that's our proposal. And if you grant me permission by passing this resolution, I'll submit the application first thing in the morning. You have any questions about why we chose, what we chose? Just keep your fingers crossed and pray that, you know, the governor go ahead and, you know, fund the thing. Any questions? Mr. Chairman, that's, you know. Motion by Mr. Jerry Groundstaff. Second by Mr. Freddie Phipps. Roll call.
Bill Adams?
Yes.
Bernard Arnold?
Yes.
Eugene Campbell?
Yes.
Jerry Gentry?
Yes.
Jerry Groundstaff?
Yes.
Evelyn Hill?
Yes.
Jimmy Lowe?
Yes.
Scott Mast?
Yes.
Megan McEwen?
Yes.
David McLean?
Yes.
Jenna Mead?
Yes.
Freddie Phipps?
Yes.
Tommy Poor?
Yes.
Rick Snyder?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I will, I will, I will submit the application tomorrow. Have the grant written, have the application filled out. And I will tell the people that are listening on the phone, I'll get them a copy of this budget emailed out to them tomorrow. I apologize for not having them one. The other thing, go ahead, you're right. So moving on to item number 11, the mayor's going to speak to us about Johnson County health safety regulations.
No, that's not on there. That's supposed to come off. We removed that.
Yeah, it's on there.
What did I take off?
Well, I noticed number nine is missing now, but that's what I thought we took off.
Oh, that's all.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
I did talk.
We removed the Johnson County health and safety regulations. I think after having several pros and cons conversations and we're not having public comments at these meetings, you know, we can maybe talk about that another time.
Okay, the next item, and I'm not even going to worry about numbers anymore.
I'm sorry.
Doe Mountain mineral rights purchase, mayor takes.
Yeah. I don't know if y'all are familiar with this or not, but about, not this last tax sale, what was that, February tax sale? That February, can't remember what month. But in the last tax sale, the one before that, a year ago, in that delinquent tax sale, there was mineral rights. And these mineral rights turned out to be about 47 acres on Doe Mountain. And they ran through the tax sale and a local person bought the mineral rights on 47 acres on Doe Mountain. Well, wasn't a whole lot said about it. Fella didn't really understand what he bought for a good while, and I think he figured out what he bought. And he offered to sell it to Doe Mountain about a year ago for what he paid for. He paid $1,000 for it. Doe Mountain went through the long spell of that it would take them forever to try to get the state to allow them to spend the money to buy it. So they've been tied up for about a year, trying to figure out if they're going to try to buy it or not. So probably about four weeks ago, Matthew Lewis came to see me. And Matthew Lewis told me that the fellow who had the mineral rights were in his office wanting to know where, just where it was on Doe Mountain. And they were trying to figure it out. And I think Rick, he came to you too, didn't he? Trying just to determine where that 47 acres is on Doe Mountain. Turns out, he was in conversation with another fellow that wants to buy them because he wants to go in there and query, he told me for granted. Now, I printed out a copy of what the mineral rights looked like, showed it to Perry. And Perry said, absolutely, he can go in there and cut down all the trees on 47 acres, dig all the holes he wants to dig. There's no, there's no way that you can tell he not, you can prospect for natural gas or all minerals. So.
And we don't want to, if we were to condemn it, them trying to figure out what's worth. If they find old, we're broke.
So Matthew had the fellow that had the mineral rights give me the call. And I talked to Perry about could the county buy that mineral rights back? And would that be an issue? Perry said. He says, you know, it's in the best interest of the citizens of this county, we can't buy. Matthew had the fellow that had it call me and we started talking on Friday and talked a little bit through. Monday, a week or so ago, it's been two weeks ago this weekend, he started at $3,000. And he did say that he had a fellow that was wanting to go up there and start prospecting for something. And I told him that, you know, we wouldn't give that for it. Kind of talked back and forth a bunch and ended up on, he said he would take $2,000 for it and that was his last offer, or he was going to go to the other fellow that was interested in it. And I said, well, that's, you know, that's a pretty good return on your money. But I think in the best interest of the county, I will approach the budget committee, county commission asks for $2,000. So with the budget committee, we, from, we could, a week from yesterday back at that budget committee, and they approved that we buy it for $2,000. The county will be in possession of it and then nobody's got to go in there and be digging holes in the ground that who knows what it cost us with Doe Mountain or somebody to fix, you know. So that's what this is about, is your permission to pay $2,000 for these 47 acres of mineral rights. And maybe in the process, we need to look at a policy of some sort about keeping those mineral rights out of the tax sale. I know we don't sell properties that are condemned and there is some other properties that we don't run through that.
If they don't get hit on, we don't buy back economically.
Is there some way we could fix this and not have this problem again?
Yeah. Now, the next time, it was the next time I would give it to tax attorneys, let's sell them, have a look over them a little better and make sure that we don't sell something we might need, like this one we did.
Exactly.
The mineral rights like that, like I said, you can tear up a place just looking. And, you know, if we found something, you know, we're done with it.
Well, I'm thinking, did y'all determine where it was that, Rick? We ended up on, kind of on this end of here, around the ramp up side.
I think so. Honestly, Tom did most of the work on that with him and I don't know if he ever did determine exactly where it was.
It'd be worse than I need to keep it down where it is when we generate that much revenue. When people drive in here from Raleigh Grove and places like that, all of a sudden, I'd say, with the trailer, they got a little bit disposable anytime. I suppose it is. And I talked to, that day we talked to Tate, he said we could probably get some money back from them.
Yeah. Tate, Tate did tell me that. He said if we did this, that he would try to work out a way to get our money back. I didn't miss that, probably have to nail that down. But Tate did say that, that we would try to figure out a way through paying some rent, maybe on the building they're in out there or something to get our money back. And I will pursue that.
We're just having a lot less red tape than we like.
That's really the case too, I think. That's what that was the fact, just asking you to prove the $2,000 to purchase that. And I talked to Russell about getting the money and Russell said that, from the financial standpoint, you said it was a good deal too.
And of course, then if they've got the right to remove them, then by soon they're going to have a right to have a right of way. And then we know what kind of trouble that's going to stir up.
The deed that was for that explicitly said ingress and egress, didn't it? And I think after, wherever they want, I don't think it's.
Then that some sort of expert would have to determine what's the best way to get it out, whatever they're getting out. If that has to be right through that house down there.
And then, you know, I can see that causing all kinds of problems. The county would have to look into, take your own somewhere down the road. So take the, feel like you're wasting $2,000, but a wild one if they might well pay.
I'd say there's a really good chance, maybe even 100% chance that at least a portion of the main trail on Doe Mountain would end up being where they would go at least to get close to it. So you can imagine you had trucks and equipment running out of that road, what that's going to do to your ATVs and UTVs. So.
Uh, they gotta be a little more diligent next time, with, uh, give the tax attorney make sure workers not selling something they might need later.
Well, I'll pose the question before we vote on this, should we, do we need some type of resolution to put that in place so that, you know, we don't sell something that could, I mean, it becomes state county assets at that point, and if it's already ours, we don't wanna have to buy it back from what we sell it for, so...
We'll come up with, uh, a, a policy that, that way, no matter who it is in the future, that may go to whoever, there'll be some communication, something to make sure it don't happen. I'll put something together. I'll put a motion that we buy these mineral rights.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is there any way to sell it to Doe Mountain, like if the county bought it? Could the sell, uh, the county turn around and sell it to Doe Mountain, if the Doe Mountain got, um, permission from the state to buy it? That way, we could get our money back?
Well, I, I think we were, we were discussing that we are probably gonna be able to get our money back from Doe Mountain. It's just gonna take longer for them to get the funds because of red tape, so...
Right.
Did you, did you hear that part of the conversation?
Uh, I heard that that's why they weren't buying it, because it was gonna take a while, but I didn't know if, if the, if the plan was to turn around and sell it to them eventually.
Uh, we might need to deed it to DMRA, just because the county really doesn't benefit from having it inside the mountain, but, uh, we can probably get our money back either, either way. Yeah, that's right.
They'll figure out a way to recoup, and that could be one way.
Yeah, that Perry says, if you can hear him, that, uh, we will recoup it one way or another, and that could be a way to do it is by giving them a deed for it, once they get...
Yeah.
Their ducks in a row and get, are able to spend the money for that.
Right. I just think it would be more beneficial for them than us, but I see why we're going this route.
Okay, any more questions? Anybody on the phone?
We just have a motion when he's...
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Freddie Phipps. Second by Mr. Scott Mass.
Roll call.
Bill Adams?
Yes.
Bernal Arnold?
Yes.
Eugene Campbell?
Yes.
Jerry Gentry?
Yes.
Jerry Grunstaff?
Yes.
Evelyn Hill?
Yes.
Jimmy Lowe?
Yes.
Scott Mass?
Yes.
Megan McEwen?
Yes.
David McLean?
Yes.
Jenna Mead?
Yes.
Freddie Phipps?
Yes.
Tommy Poor?
Yes.
Rick Snyder?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll have our attorney make up a quick plan for you.
The next item we have is extension of lease for the second district fire department.
Uh, Chris Pierce came to me a few days back, uh, telling me that their lease had run out in twenty-fourteen, and that lease was a thirty-year lease. So, we went, Perry went ahead and fixed the lease form, and they wanted to apply for some grants. He asked, could we give them that land, or could we make them a, a long-term lease? So, he felt like it, or they felt like, his group felt like it was more conducive to getting grants if they had a longer lease on, on property. So, they asked for a ninety-nine-year lease. And Perry said that that was the route to go.
Yeah, we wanted to do that, so we came to, you know...
But the lease is pretty much the same. It's, uh, you know, they're, they've got the liability, uh, it's an easy getting out of, uh, lease too.
It's likely in a power...
Yeah, Perry looked it over, and, and, and so they've asked if we give them a lease. But if you think about that, that, that lease will run until twenty-one, not twenty. So, that's what they've asked for, a long-term lease, that, because they want, they're trying to get some funding from here to where they're at. They're, they're, they're looking for some grant funding.
Hope I'm not.
They're looking for some grant funding to help repair their buildings. They've got some needs to do some work on their, on their buildings there. So, they thought they would be better up to, in a better position to get those grants if they had a long-term lease. But, uh, we have the lease prepared. With your permission, I will sign off on it.
I make the motion to approve that ninety-nine-year lease.
You'll just be on the county commission board like.
I second that motion.
Okay, Mr. Bill Adams with the motion, and was that you, Megan?
Yep.
Megan, okay.
It's Megan.
Megan with the second.
Okay, sorry. Okay, Bill Adams?
Yes.
Bernal Arnold?
Yes.
Eugene Campbell?
Yes.
Jerry Gentry?
Yes.
Jerry Grunstaff?
Yes.
Evelyn Hill?
Yes.
Jimmy Lowe? Scott Mass?
Yes.
Megan McEwen?
Yes.
David McLean?
Yes.
Jenna Mead?
Yes.
Freddie Phipps?
Yes.
Tommy Poor?
Yes.
Rick Snyder?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Motion carries.
Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. We do have an addendum, um, declare various computer and related items surplus for the sheriff's department. Lee Dustin's gonna speak about that.
This, especially on doggy pack, it's, you know, off the board, broke, busted, it's been ours, most of that stuff, prior to the last administration, why it took over, uh, none of it's unusable, can't sell it, it doesn't work. I just want my professional to get it, get it out of the way of Perry, Perry's just playing.
With the quantity there, I figured it'd be better for you guys to approve it, than getting my notes, but...
It's not surplus, it's, it's trash, trash.
Just, uh, so it's not to surplus, they just, uh, destroy it.
Not to sell.
There's quite a bit of stuff, and I'm sure that Mr. Sutherland will pull the hard drive down that.
I would suggest here, yeah. Oh, that's good for you. I just probably said...
Okay, any questions?
Now, I'm just thinking back. I remember we have some old willow trees up there that they cut, and we had to declare surplus for them, to get rid of the farmer. So, I'm just asking, can, can we give them away, throw them away, or does it have to be declared as surplus?
Yeah, but, um, it's potentially a collective value of a thousand dollars, but it's, you're all gonna be destroyed, so it just needs to be taken to the dump. That's why we're, we're bringing it to you to, since it's such a, that quantity, I, I'm, I'm allowed to do a thousand dollars or less, but the collective value of this, if you could salvage it, could be over a thousand dollars, so that's the reason why we're, we're asking for your permission.
But if we declare it surplus, we're not required to sell it? We can't destroy it?
Yeah, we destroy it.
Surplus, surplus. And it's basically just, that's the way to install it. Very much, we're probably not talking about that.
Yeah, and they won't be able to use it anyway.
Numbers on, okay. Now, I understand.
Okay.
Maybe when we make, put that in the form of a motion, we need to declare it surplus to destroy.
I'll make a motion, surplus to destroy.
Mr. Bill Adams with the motion. Second by Mr. Tommy Poor. Roll call, please.
Okay. Bill Adams?
Yes.
Bernal Arnold?
Yes.
Eugene Campbell?
Yes.
Jerry Gentry?
Yes.
Jerry Grunstaff?
Yes.
Evelyn Hill?
Yes.
Jimmy Lowe?
Yes.
Scott Mass?
Yes.
Megan McEwen?
Yes.
David McLean?
Yes.
Jenna Mead?
Yes.
Freddie Phipps?
Yes.
Tommy Poor?
Yes.
Rick Snyder?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries. So, that is all I have on the agenda. So, I'll start by, those of you calling in, does anyone have anything to bring up? Okay. Mr. Mayor, you have anything?
I'll just update you a little bit on, uh, our COVID-19. Right now, we've probably gone, uh, I think the, you guys did test, three of them tested. So, we haven't had any, any other pauses since that time. We, we don't have any active pauses in the county right now. We've been that way, I think this is day three, isn't it? So, uh, you know, right now, we've had stores open and had, uh, haircut businesses open and things, and, and hopefully, you know, it'll stay like that and we'll have a spike or anything. Uh, the governor today has, beginning tomorrow, restaurants are gonna be able to have more than fifty percent. They're gonna have, they're gonna be able to have full capacity if they've got room to social distance, they can have six feet between the tables, and you can have parties of ten now around the dinner table instead of six. Uh, he's opening up retail stores to full capacity too, if they will continue to distance and, you know, wear masks and follow the guidelines. So, uh, he has changed that social gathering thing to the number of, from ten to fifty now. Uh, he, he's saying that, uh, groups of fifty are okay, uh, but he's yet recommended masks and social distancing, those kind of things. He's opening up some outdoor venues. I follow racetrack, those, volunteer dirt track, is that a dirt track or a small asphalt track? They're opening those up, but they're, you know, social distancing. So, as he begins to open things up and move us hopefully back toward a, a more normal state, we had a ten limit of folks in the courthouse at a time. I'm, I, I sent out a notice today that beginning tomorrow, we're going to go back to, you know, less public in, and, uh, encourage them to social distance, and if they wanna wear masks, wear the mask. Leave it up to each of the elected officials if they don't want any more than three or four, five in their office, that's out, leave their signs up. But, uh, beginning tomorrow, we're gonna kinda move in the direction the governor's going and, you know, start, uh, listen to that. I'll know about that.
Anyone else?
Got a quick one, Ray.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Anyone else? Thanks, guys, for calling in. I know that's not an ideal situation, but, uh, maybe we're making the best of it. Hopefully, we won't have to do this anymore, maybe. If nothing else, it's Jimmy Lowe's turn. Mr. Jimmy Lowe with the motion. Second, Mr. Scott Mass. All in favor? We won't roll call, y'all are in favor, aren't you, on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, we're good.